Good evening, everyone. My name is Steven Buck. I'm the City Manager for the City of Sanford. Welcome this evening to the Sanford Downtown Raise Grant Improvement Projects. This is a public hearing this evening. I'd like to do a brief introduction. Ben, if you could pull the presentation up on the screen, please. So in this introduction for this evening, I'd like to talk to you about the Raise Grant that Sanford has been awarded. How did we get here and the why's? And a brief history of the partnership that we arrived here. So the Raise Grant is the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. It's a competitive federal grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation to invest in roads and transportation. It's been formerly known as the Build and the Tiger Grants. Sanford's Raise Grant has been approved for 25 million from the U.S. Department of Transportation, with additional funding coming from Main DOT, Department of Transportation, and the City of Sanford, estimated to be about an additional 10 million. History of the partnership path to raise, this is very important. The city performed an engineered assessment of streets. We set our goals towards funding the improvements through the Capital Improvements Program. We sought a coordinated partnership on our shared state municipal roads. City has successfully partnered with the Main Department of Transportation on a number of municipal partnership initiatives, MPI's, on roadways, and that's a shared funding proposal, as well as local construction. And the city sought to increase this relationship and inquired of the Main Department of Transportation how best to amplify that partnership and our priorities going forward. Planning, it's all about planning. The city embarked with the blessings of the Department of Transportation on what's known as a planning partnership initiative, put agreement, but it's a planning partnership initiative, which was an enormous task internally here for the city. So I'd like to, our Public Works Director, Matthew Hill, is here this evening. I'd like to call him out as being the person responsible for putting that planning partnership initiative together, the agreement, and the agreements between the city and the Main Department of Transportation. And through that, we produced about a six-inch-thick document that has all of the planning aspects, all of the initiatives that the city was working on, our transportation priorities, and the work that we plan to do in our downtown. So that plan was to study, evaluate, plan, and scope transportation projects on or adjacent to the state transportation system with MDOT as a partner. So that really started to further solidify the partnership that we have with MDOT, and you'll see that here tonight. The PPI was intended to address time-sensitive, locally-initiated planning and feasibility studies outside of Main DOT's normal annual work plan cycle. So how do we get our priorities moved earlier up and further on? And how do we best partner with the Department of Transportation? So during and after the implementation of the PPI, the city continued to partner with Main DOT on municipal partnership agreements on roadways, especially in our downtown. From the finalized PPI and its focus on our downtown and the number of MPI's within our downtown, the vision had been developed. So a concept of a village partnership initiative, I think we were the first out of the gates with that piece, was crafted with the department. And that's described as being, one of the segments of that is a once-in-a-lifetime investments if we can successfully partner to access federal discretionary funds. So the Raise Grant is federal discretionary funds. So it was the village partnership initiative that the city embarked with the Department of Transportation towards making an application for a Raise Grant. We had a very rapid and accelerated process. The vision, multiple pre-existing MPI's, and the planning elements of the PPI were encompassed into a competitive grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation. And I will note that the city could not have undertaken that enormous effort without the support of the Main Department of Transportation and their consultants. The result was a competitive award of 25 million towards the construction of Sanford's downtown vision within the village partnership initiative. It's a partnership of roadway improvements with the Main Department of Transportation and now with USD DOT funding as part of that share. So I'm not going to get into the scope of work. This is a brief description in here because I know we're going to go over that entire scope this evening, so I'm going to set this slide aside. So in summary, tonight's presentation is the collaboration of partners representing years, emphasis, years of planning, program, and funding partnerships, and the amplification of our working relationships to foster federal funds towards achieving our transportation improvements. I'd like to call out recognition and thanks that got us here this evening. First is that to the City Council for the capital programming and the adoption of our transportation plans. That has been a significant and recognizable investment that's being made by the City Council and that is truly starting to pay dividends in our community. I'd like to thank Matthew Hill for the PPI and the coordination of the city staff and resources. It was a tremendous effort and undertaking to get that PPI in place, which I believe led us to where we are today. I'd like to recognize the Main Department of Transportation for their very innovative programs under the MPI, the PPI, and now the VPI. We like our acronyms. They shorten things up. And I'd also like to recognize the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Raise Grant funds made available through Congress, our federal Congress. And I can't say enough about Senator Collins for her support of our application and the rest of our congressional delegation for the funds and allocations in support of tonight's Raise Grant presentation. So with that, I'd like to turn the podium over to Ernie Martin. He's from the Main Department of Transportation, Project Manager, and he'll be talking to
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Like Steve said, I'm Ernie Martin with the Main Department of Transportation. We're here tonight for the Plumbary Public Meeting, you know, to receive, to present, receive comments on the grant project that Steve mentioned. Obviously, there's four key elements to the project, a lot of elements associated with this project. You have the Main Street Downtown piece, and then you have Cottage Street Route 202. Associated with that, you have the William Oscar Emery Drive, Riverside Avenue Bike Path, Safe Roots to School project, as well as a park-and-ride associated with it, which is near Emerson Street. The purpose of this project was to basically provide economic opportunity and quality of life to the City of Sanford, you know, with the safest and most reliable transportation possible within the available resources. Like Steve had mentioned, it's a really unique opportunity right now that's out there for all municipalities. Like Steve said, Sanford is the first to jump on the VPI. Village Partnership Initiative, like Steve said, we're very acronym-oriented, so that's where it's at. So if you haven't already, there's agendas on the back of the table, kind of outlays, you know, where we're going from after I get done talking. I'm going to turn it over to the design teams. We have DOT design team is doing the downtown project, as well as the Cottage Street project. And then the city is what we call locally administering the trail project and the park-and-ride. So that's going really well right now. Still a long way to go, and I'll talk about that in a little while. So once the design's done, I'll come back and talk about that timeline and the communication that still is in front of us that needs to take place, which is a lot. This is very early in the stage. We have a long way to go, and I'll talk about the schedule as we move forward as well. And then following all the presentations and discussions from the design teams, I'll turn it over to Q and A, you know, for those that are in the audience, as well as for those that are online tonight. So as Steve said, Matt Hill, City Engineer, is here tonight. Matt Preventia is Assistant from VHB, who is doing, as I mentioned, is doing the downtown and Cottage Street portions. Tony Grande and Ethan Flynn are here with that team tonight. For Goro Palmer, they're doing the trail project, as well as a park-and-ride. We have Don Eddinger. So right now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Ethan, and he's going to start the presentations for the downtown and Cottage Street, and then he'll turn it over to Don to talk about the trail, as well as the park-and-ride, and then I'll return to go over some other details.
Thank you, Ernie. As Ernie stated, my name is Ethan Flynn. I'm the Project Engineer for the VHB projects. So I'm going to be talking to you tonight about two of the four components. One component being the downtown improvements and the other component being the Cottage Street reconstruction project. And then, as Ernie said, Don will be explaining the other two components. So to start off, I'm going to start with the downtown improvements project, which you can see on the screen now. This project is composed of three separate corridors. There's Main Street from Emory Street to Route 202, which is approximately .6 miles. There's Washington Street, which is from Main Street to High Street. And then there's an additional 300 feet of River Street across, beyond High Street. And those two segments combined are about .26 miles. There's, and then there's School Street from Elm Street back to Washington, which is .19 Here's a zoom in of the first half of Main Street from Emory to Robert Street. I just want to go over some of the symbology and colors quickly. The travel lanes on the road are shown in yellow, in a bright yellow. The shoulders are more of a golden yellow. Sidewalks are gray. Grass slopes are green. The roadway center line is red. Right-of-way is pink. And then your text, your striping, your lane lines, and your stenciling is black. There's also a north arrow on these slides in the upper right to give you a little bit of orientation. The horizontal and profiles of all the sections of the downtown improvements project aren't changing. They're generally staying where they are. The light yellow section at the beginning here is going to be a mill and fill of the intersection. And then when you get into the brighter yellow, that's where our full reconstruction starts. The full reconstruction is going to be new roadway pavement and gravel, new sidewalk, granite curb, and drainage on both sides of the road. Throughout the project, the impacts will generally extend to the face of buildings where the sidewalk up butts a building. And where the buildings are set back, then the impacts will be a few feet behind the sidewalk. The travel lanes in this first section here on the screen will be 13 feet in two-lane sections. In the three-lane sections, they'll be 12 feet. All parking areas will be eight feet wide, and all sidewalks will be six feet wide. All sidewalks will be concrete throughout the project. And throughout the project, all sidewalks will be made ADA compliant, and all the crosswalks will be put in safe locations per Main DOT standards. Pedestrian bumpouts will be placed at various locations at all the crossings. For the most part, the crossings' locations aren't changing, but in the middle of your screen here, there'll be a new mid-block crossing across Main Street. At the intersection at the beginning of the project, the, excuse me, the traffic mast arm in the lower right-hand corner will be replaced, and all those crossing locations, again, will remain generally where they are today. On your screen is a rendering of that mid-block crossing at the Sunset Towers. This is kind of an early concept that we developed in the planning portion of the project. Some of the elements here are, may change as the design progresses, but this will just give you an idea of kind of what the finished project may, the finished product may look Here's the second half of Main Street. Once again, there's a section that's in light yellow at the end, at the intersection of Route 202. That will be milling filled as well, but the bright yellow areas will be full reconstruction. That light area at the end, at the intersection of 202, is part of the department's build project. And as part of that, there will be some signal and pedestrian ramp improvements that will be happening next summer. That's not associated with this project, but this project will tie into those improvements. Once again, the bright yellow is going to be full reconstruction, and those same elements of new roadway pavement, gravel, sidewalk, curb, and drainage on both sides will be replaced. In this section, once again, the two-lane sections will be 13 feet wide, but in the three-lane sections in the second half, the middle lane will be 11 feet wide, and the outside lane will remain 13 feet wide. Sidewalks will be six feet minimum, but in a large sections of this second half, the sidewalks will be much wider and extending to the face of buildings. Again, we'll have pedestrian bumpouts at all the crossings. There's going to be a, the crossing in the middle of the screen will be shifted slightly to where it is today, to the right from the screen perspective, to in front of the Congregational Church. Other than that, all the crossings will generally remain where they are today. The RFB that's right out front, in front of City Hall, will be reset. And across from the park, you can see on the left side of your screen and kind of that call-out in the upper left, the sidewalk there slopes fairly steeply to the entrances of those businesses. So as part of this project, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be putting the curb where it is today, having a three-foot snow shelf, and then putting another curb that will raise the sidewalk to meet those entrances to that building. And there'll be ADA compliant ramps on either end of that section. Also in this section, from Robert Street to the end, we're working with the city to extend their Sanford net fiber conduit throughout that corridor. Once again, here's another rendering of what the finished project product may look like. This, again, was developed during the planning phase of some of the streetscape elements, and finite details may change from what ultimately happens. But this rendering is from the perspective of the Congregational Church looking across On the screen now is Washington and River. At the far end of this project, on the right side of the screen, of River, this project will tie into a River Street improvements project that Don will touch on, but that's currently being advertised and is slated for construction next summer. Once again, the areas in bright yellow will be full reconstruction, which will, again, include your roadway pavement, your roadway gravel, sidewalk curb, and drainage. In this section, travel ways will vary from 12 to 14 feet. Sidewalks will be a six-foot minimum, but again, in a lot of cases, though, they'll be wider extending to the face of building. Again, there'll be pedestrian bumpouts. Currently, at the end of School Street, there's a crosswalk across Washington, and as you can see on that screen, that crosswalk's going to move slightly to the right. The light yellow section on this, in the middle, are the two bridges over the Mussum River. Those will receive a milling overlay. And as part of that, we will also be widening the sidewalk on the Mussum River to 10 feet wide. The existing sidewalk on the bridge is six feet, and so as part of that, we're going to be adding another concrete beam to the dam side of the bridge and widening that sidewalk four feet, and then replacing the existing bridge rail with something very similar to what's there today. As part of that, that little lookout between the two bridges is going to be narrowed slightly because the sidewalk's going to be widened into that. Now you can see on your screen the section of School Street. Again, School Street will be full reconstruction. There'll be bumpouts at all the pedestrian crossings. School Street is a one-way roadway, heading from right to left on the screen. It'll be a 13-foot-wide road. Sidewalks will be a six-foot minimum, but for the majority of the road, the sidewalks will be eight and a half feet wide. And one thing that's kind of unique here is the drainage upgrades. Shown on the typical view in the upper left, you'll see that white rectangle kind of in the middle. The under-drain will be placed at the middle of the roadway. And the reason we're doing that, instead of having drainage on each gutter line, is because there's significant utility conflicts with doing that because the existing utilities are under the existing curb lines. So we're going to have a single trunk line down the middle of the road, and then the drainage structures in either gutter line will drain to that trunk line in the middle. Now, I'll talk, I'll zoom in and talk about the intersections. On the screen is the intersection of Main, Washington, and School. This intersection will have the mast arm replaced. That existing aluminum-colored mast arm will be replaced with a black-colored mast arm. The crossings are generally going to stay where they are today. Here's the intersection of Washington River and High. In this intersection, the signals are on a span wire that goes diagonally across the intersection. In the after, those signals will be put on mast arms. And the entrance that is across from High Street will be closed off, and a new 10-foot shared-use path will be put on that side of the roadway. Again, the signal will be upgraded with new pedestrian push buttons and pedestrian signals. That concludes the overview of the downtown improvements project, so now I'll start to talk about the Cottage Street reconstruction. Here's an overview of the project. The project limits start just beyond the bridge joint on Winter Street and extend 3/4 of a mile to the northeast. There's been a recent pavement project, I think it may even still be ongoing, that the DOT is currently doing. Our project will extend to that point and butt into that pavement joint. Here's a zoom in to the first half of the project. On these plans, the colors and symbology that I went over on downtown are exactly the same. Again, there's no major changes to the horizontal and vertical profiles. The roadway will be fully reconstructed, so again, new pavement, new gravel, new granite curb, new concrete sidewalks, new drainage on both sides of the street. We've evaluated the retaining walls, and we will be replacing any retaining wall that we deem to be in disrepair, but some of the existing concrete retaining walls were deemed to be okay. So those will remain. So we'll be replacing the ones that are cracked, and some of the other ones where the grade of the sidewalk is changing, we will be replacing those as well. Throughout the project, the impacts will basically be to the face of wall in the wall sections, but where there isn't walls, sloping may extend beyond the sidewalk to match it into the existing grade. Travel lanes will be 11 feet wide. Shoulders from River Street to Brook Street will be three feet wide, but in all other locations, they'll be five feet wide. Sidewalks on both sides of the street will be five and a half feet wide. And again, those will be upgraded to meet ADA standards, and crosswalks will be placed in safe locations per Main DOT standards. Here's the view of the second half of the project. Again, in this location, travel lanes will be 11 feet. Shoulders will be five feet wide. Sidewalks will end near the intersection of June Street. On the high side of this screen, they'll extend to Janess, but on the low side of the screen, they'll stop at June Street. A rectangular rapid flashing beacon will be installed on the right side of North Ave, which is on the left side of the screen. The crosswalk on the left side of North Ave, from this perspective, will be eliminated. The reason for that is we're trying to direct all crossings at the rapid rectangular flashing beacon, so that all pedestrians crossing the street will be, will have that signalized Zooming in to the intersection of Winter River and Cottage, again, there's a separate build project that'll be happening next summer. That'll take the existing signal that's on span wires. It'll remain on span wires, but they'll be upgrading the traffic signals. They'll be installing pedestrian equipment, pedestrian signals, pedestrian push buttons, and making some sidewalk improvements of the crossings. But that's not associated with this project that I'm presenting tonight. And then Don will talk more about some of the River Street improvements. But there will be a new 10-foot path installed on the left side of River Street. So the end result will be a 10-foot path all the way around the Number One Pond. Here's the intersection of Cottage and Brook. As part of this project, we'll be updating the flashing beacon that's there. It'll remain a flashing beacon, but it'll have brand-new equipment, and the crossings will generally stay where they are today. In addition, there's going to be some drainage improvements that you can see on your screen in yellow here that go down northern and then extend throughout the neighborhood, all the way down to High Street. The reason for that is with all the improvements, we're changing some of the drainage that's going off-site. So we'll be evaluating and upgrading the drainage along this route. And the Sanford Sewer District also has the plans to upgrade some of the sewer components in this stretch as well. So the end result will, this section will most likely receive some preservation pavement after the fact, after all that trenching. And with that, that concludes my presentation on Cottage Street. I'll turn it over to Don to talk about his two components.
All right, good evening. My name's Don Ettinger. I work with Goral Palmer. Thank you for the opportunity to present on a couple of these projects. This slide here just summarizes some of the key contacts on the two projects we're going to be talking about. William-Oscar Emery and Riverside Ave, as well as the Park and Ride Facility over on Emerson Street. Wanted to just point out a couple of key names here. Jerry Dostie is representative from Main DOT, who's our current point of contact on the two assignments, two projects that we'll be talking about tonight. Jared Winchton-Batch is actually our project manager on this assignment, but unfortunately, he's not able to attend tonight. And we have Seth Kimball here as a potential replacement with Acedo Landscaping. So we are actually proposing landscaping on both of our projects. And so in the Q and A, we certainly field some questions there if you have any. All right, you've heard some mention of the Malsum Promenade. This graphic here is a good picture. We've kind of rotated the view from Ethan's slides. So if we're looking here, there's Number One Pond. Main Street for bearing is up here. City Hall is probably right over here someplace, maybe there. And then this is River Street in blue. This is the project that Ethan's projects will overlap. Cottage Ave comes down and ties in at this location. And then Ethan's project also includes the Washington Street back up here to Main Street. So you can see there's some overlap or some connectivity between the projects. The project in blue is a project that's already been designed. I think if, maybe if the city knew that they were going forward with being successful and getting a raise grant, they might have delayed that and rolled that into it. But that project's been designed and it's actually out on the street for advertisement. Bids will be opened in the next month or so and hopefully construction will begin on that project next season. So not going to spend a lot of time on River Street, but I do have copies of plans and Keller-Haring plans should anybody have questions in the Q and A on that project. We're going to focus on the red project and the green project. It's kind of festive, Christmasy, but it wasn't intentional. So Riverside Ave is the red highlighted project and William-Oscar Emery Drive will be the green one. So what I wanted to mention on Malsum Promenade project is the goal here is to provide a connection of a multi-use trail 10 feet wide around the entire perimeter of Number One Pond. So between Ethan's projects that he's mentioned and these three projects here, we'll be successful in doing that. The trail will be located on the inside of the roadways nearest the pond. So we're going to talk about Riverside Ave first. And for bearing, again, Washington Street is over here and we'll be heading over towards Maple Street. Gateway Park is located in this area and the Midtown Mall is located here. I had a little cursor in red that you guys might be able to see. All right, first, let's talk about the typical cross-section. Ethan had this on a few of his slides, so this is what the roadway cross-section will look like when we build the project. Riverside Ave will be full reconstruction, so it'll be replacement of gravels and pavements. We're looking at 11-foot lanes in width. The shoulders will vary in width, minimum of one to two feet, but we'll make them as large as eight feet if we're providing on-street parking. And we have areas where we're doing that. We have curbing on both sides and the curb type will be slip-form concrete curb. So it'll be a concrete curb. We have some areas where we'll have an esplanade, a green space between the curb and sidewalks. Some locations will be right up against the curb. So we're proposing a 10-foot multi-use path on the right-hand side, on the pond side, and a five-and-a-half-foot minimum sidewalk width on the non-pond side. So here's a plan view. The colors, Ethan did a great job of describing the colors, so I'm not going to spend time on doing that. But generally speaking, the roadway footprint will stay the same. Its location horizontally and vertically will stay relatively the same. We're just going to change what exists within that footprint. There's a right-of-way width on these plans. There's that heavy dash line that's black that runs through here on both sides. That represents the width of public right-of-way. So that would be what the city owns for public use for this roadway. And we're pretty much maxing out that width with our new roadway footprint. Washington Ave is over here, so we'll be looking at building 11-foot travel lanes. In this case here, two-foot shoulders. On the right-hand side, we're going to have the Potuminus 10-foot wide multi-use path. The parking that exists into the Gateway Park will remain. And we'll continue the path along the roadway. On the opposite side, non-pond side, we're proposing a variable width median, esplanade, green space, as well as a sidewalk. You'll see driveway entrances are highlighted here in that kind of rustic yellow color. As we continue down the road, we now intersect with Winter Street, this location here. So our plans currently propose to design roadway improvements up to the intersection, but not through Winter Street. We are aware it's a high-crash location. We've actually had one public meeting on this project already. We've received quite a bit of feedback. So we're going to look at safety improvements at this location. As noted, we're proposing the multi-use path crossing there. So we'll be looking to try to enhance that, improve safety through that intersection. And then it continues on all the way to, all the way over to Maple Street. So the theme is consistent, 11-foot lanes, probably one to two-foot shoulders, curbing on both sides, multi-use path on the pond side and a sidewalk on the non-pond side. The sidewalk actually ends at Acorn Street and there'll be a gap. This block here is not proposing any sidewalk on that side. So at Maple Street, that's when Riverside Ave actually ends. It's a continuation of a roadway, but it turns into William-Oscar Emery Drive at that point. So we're going to, the next few slides will talk about William-Oscar Emery. And if I can slide my cursor over, we're over in this area is where we stopped to the last slide. And so we'll be continuing down. The theme, as we get into William-Oscar Emery, will change, as shown in the next graphic here. This is our typical section. What's primarily different with this typical section is we're not planning to rip up all the pavement and gravel on William-Oscar Emery. It's in pretty good shape, so what we're looking to do is probably mill and overlay and maybe reshape the crown a little bit, but really the primary work effort will be on the outsides, the curbing area and the multi-use path and sidewalk areas. So Riverside Ave is very residential, a lot of properties right up against the roadway network. And you can see that continues to the next block here at Pleasant Ave. But once we get past Pleasant Ave, the theme kind of changes, the character kind of changes. We have less residential properties. We now start getting to the frontage of Number One Pond. And so our opportunity to kind of change the template, the roadway template, improves as we get in that area. So for that first block, the theme is consistent with Riverside Ave. But as we depart from Pleasant Ave and we come down towards Lincoln Street, we're proposing a gateway treatment. We want to inform the users of this facility that you're now entering a different area. And so we're proposing a center median. It'll be landscaped and the road, the travel lanes will travel around it. So it's kind of like a gateway, you've arrived to a different destination. Our multi-use path, which was right up against the road, now starts to separate. And it now splits the distance between the roadway and the pond. Many people have asked about the hedge line. There's a hedge line that runs around the perimeter of the pond and whether we'd be impacting that. And the answer is no. We're planning on maintaining that, that hedge line around the perimeter. We'll be working from behind that up to our roadway area with improvements. So you can see the theme here, the blue obviously is the pond. This little fainted line here is your hedge line. So behind that, we'll be proposing the pathway, should be very scenic. And then we've got our roadway. We have many areas, once we get into this stretch, where we have eight-foot shoulders to allow for on-street parking. And yeah, we actually had a conversation in our workshop this afternoon. This seems to be the area where skating takes place, winter skating, and the possibility of maybe extending that wide shoulder back in here to provide a few more places for on-street parking was discussed. Ethan had mentioned pedestrian bump outs at crosswalks, curb extensions. So wherever we have crosswalks, we're proposing the same through here. So where there would be a pedestrian crosswalk, we'd like to eliminate the on-street parking, make the shoulder narrower, and make our pedestrian crossing distance shorter and safer. So we're proposing that at all locations of pedestrian crosswalks. Now we're heading to the traffic circle. That is where the water skiers participate, that one corner. It's Edward Gowan Road, takes you up to the schools and the park. We're proposing to change that intersection pretty significantly. Right now, it's a traffic circle. We're proposing to eliminate the circle and create a T-intersection. In doing so, we can reduce our roadway footprint, our pavement footprint significantly. So the bright yellow represents the roadway footprint as proposed. This lighter green is the existing pavement footprint. That would all turn into lawn areas or be reused for another, you know, another opportunity. So we see a much smaller transportation footprint here. The gray areas are sidewalks, so you can see sidewalks with esplanades, which are these lighter green spaces, just grass or landscaped areas. We have our pathway on the pond side continuing. So that theme will continue down. William-Oscar Emery, now we're heading on the straight stretch that takes us to River Street. As we continue down, we have recreation areas on the non-pond side. So we have strategic crosswalk locations with curb extensions to access those trails, those recreation trails. And there's a dog park a little further down on the screen. Now this is the terminal end of William-Oscar Emery and we're tying into River Street here. So we had mentioned a gateway treatment on the other end. We're proposing a similar gateway treatment on the River Street end. So a wide raised median that would be landscaped, that separates each travel lane on entry. And then we're also proposing a pretty wide mid-block crossing here. This would be the multi-use trail crossing, which would give them access to the dog park that's located here, but also they can come down and get access to the multi-use trail that takes it eventually to YMCA, to the schools and thereabouts. This is a zoom in of the area of Edward Gowan Road, just showing how it's being reconfigured with Front Street in this area. There's a parking lot that exists up in this area here. We've had prior discussions with city staff about an opportunity to maybe extend it, provide more parking in that area. It could be opportunities to just, you know, reuse this space for food trucks during events and things like that on both sides of the intersection. This is some of the landscaping aspects of it. We have a full set of landscaping plans that we can make available in the Q and A. The bottom left corner kind of shows you some of the landscaping proposed at the Gowan Road intersection, but not only landscaping, but amenities, you know, seating areas, benches, bike racks. They're scattered throughout the Number One Pond corridor or this corridor of the road. So as mentioned, we had a public meeting back in May on this project. We've kind of pumped the brakes a bit to let the raise grant projects catch up to speed. Some miscellaneous items, we're still early in the process. We're probably about 50% complete on this one, so there's still a lot of work ahead of us. And there's environmental coordination and utility coordination that we'll be doing and potentially appearing in front of site plan, planning board for site plan approval. And that completes the slideshow for William-Oscar Emery. I will transition to Park and Ride Lot. Okay, so this is an overall view of downtown Sanford. Main Street is right in this area here. As you start heading down South Main Street, this is where the Cumberland Farms gas station is located. Emerson Street is just above it. I think this might be Emery Street heading out this way. It's a signalized intersection. Where the Cumberland Farms was, I believe that was city-owned property at one time. They also own the parcel behind it. So it was, I think, bisected when the Cumberland Farms came through. Positive on that. So the next slide here shows what it looks like behind Cumberland Farms today. It's kind of an open field area. I think it's used for overflow parking for a nearby church on occasion, but it's a pretty vacant lot. The upper portion of it is all cleared and filled. The lower portion is wooded. And then here's a view of what is proposed in this area. So I'll give folks a bearing. This is Main Street located here. Heading into town is in the up direction. This is Emerson Street here. The Cumberland Farms gas station is located here. And then there's a parcel of land following my cursor that's city-owned, comes to here, comes down to here, back to there, and then it continues back up to here and then continues across. So the city secured an easement, a permanent easement with Cumberland Farms to provide access into that parcel in the future. So they had some forethought and thinking ahead. So there's actually, with this park and ride facility, a parking facility, there's going to be proposed two access points. One which will tie into the existing parking facility at the Cumberland Farms, but it also gives direct access to the signal on Main Street. So we felt that was kind of helpful in a secondary access on Emerson Street. This park and ride facility would be paved. It's proposing 87 parking stalls with a portion of them being handicap stalls. It's, we want it to be as complete of a facility for future use as possible. It's got two aisles with circulation. It will be used for transit purposes. We have a transit stop here with a bus shelter pad and shelter located here. Our handicap spaces are here. We have four stalls up in this area, which will serve as just normal stalls for now, but with the opportunity to maybe have those as EV charging stations in the future. In terms of pedestrian access, we are providing for a sidewalk on one side of the facility that will connect into the handicap stalls, give access to the transit stop, but also continue across and access Emery Street with a crosswalk to the sidewalk that exists on Emerson Street. The site also includes a small retaining wall. When we were doing the grading plan for this site, they required a small two-to-three-foot-high retaining wall on a corner here. And then this area back here is for drainage purposes. So we'd like all of our drainage to come back to this area and we're planning a retention pond in that area for water quality and quantity purposes. The goal is for as much infiltration into the ground with our drainage with this design as possible. Couple of typical cross-sections. Again, it's going to be reconstruction or new construction with gravel and pavement. We'll be picking the grades up a little bit. We'll have, in areas where we do have curbing, it'll be slip-form concrete curb. This is a view of the grading plan as well as our drainage plan. So it shows some proposed contours and how the site might grade with a goal of treating our drainage at this detention pond in the backside. The site will be lit. It's worth noting that the previous project as well, there will be lighting for the multi-use path around the entire perimeter of Number One Pond. We will be cut off fixtures, so we want to minimize light pollution onto adjacent properties. So this graphic here just kind of shows what we're thinking at the moment. And then this graphic here talks a bit about, or shows and demonstrates a bit about the landscaping. Some of our earlier conversations with city staff, the goal and intent of this site was to try to mimic the landscaping that exists at Cumberland Farms. So that is what we've attempted to do. And we're providing some amenities and some fencing. The perimeter would be fenced along this site. Similar to the previous project, there's utility coordination, environmental coordination that we'll need to do, we'll also need to do, we'll likely sit in front of the planning board for site plan approval with this project. And as mentioned, we're currently at 50% design. We actually We actually just submitted this design to city staff a few days ago. They haven't really had a chance to review it, so you guys are seeing it before they are, so... And that completes my presentations.
Thanks, Ben. Thank God for Ben tonight. Okay. So up next, we're going to talk a little bit about where we see the project timeline. Project meaning all four presentations that you saw tonight. Looks relatively easy, right? Not a whole lot going on. So with that, when you look at the dates that are on the screen now, you've got the open house, public hearing that took place tonight. Then, we're all going to proceed to what we call Plan Impacts Complete. That's where probably a lot of people are most interested in right now. What Plan Impacts Complete are is the outer limits of all construction of each project, meaning all the grading, you know, any walls, any driveways, anything to do with the roadway, raising it, lowering it. It impacts the side of the road. So that outer limit is where we're all trying to achieve now. So we're hoping to get there by December '23. So what we have in front of us right now is, we've got to look at all the roadway drainage. Basically, what you've heard tonight is basically the road design itself, curb to curb, maybe the back of sidewalks a little bit. But now, we've got to focus on everything under the road and exterior where that roadway footprint is going, which is a challenge. And thank you for the utilities that are in the room or online or have been part of our utility coordination meetings. That's what it takes. We all have to get in the room, start looking at what's under the road, what's above the road, what has to move, what gets added, what conflicts we have. We've still got a long road ahead of us to make that happen, but I think we've got a good footprint to start with, and communication is very key here. So once we get that Plan Impact Complete, we're going to come back down again. But associated, when we come back down again, we'll dive into a little bit of the constructability of how all this is going to take place. You know, so when you look at the timelines on the screen, you know, the project advertised, you know, from the plans and specs, from Plan Impact Complete to the plans and specs, that's two years. So when you look at the properties that, the abutting properties that are immediately next to the project limits of each one of these projects, there's about 300 property owners. You know, so we've got to navigate 300 property owners to get to that PS and E Complete package as well. That's a really big mountain to climb when it comes to our process for roadway design and construction. So hopefully, we can expedite that, but that's a two-year process, maybe even a little more. So when we come back next time, we'll have a better idea, better sense of that, as well as obviously all the impacts that I talked about. There's walls out there, there's driveways that are going to change, there's aerial utilities that might have to move. All that impacts that PIC. So hopefully, when we come back in later '23, we'll have better answers for you. So based off, we get to Plan Specs and Estimate Complete in '25, Project Advertise right after that, you know, late December, January, hopefully. Bid openings in January '26. You know, then you're looking at Project Award February, construction begins March, April of '26. With the federal discretionary funds, it also comes with a limit where you have to obligate those funds by. That date is actually September 30th of 2026. So I'm trying to push as much as I can to get this on the street. The city has a lot going on, as we've all talked about tonight, and as Steve mentioned, there's more to come beyond what we've talked about. So I know the importance of making that connectivity to that River Street project that's coming out with all these other projects, so all that connectivity can happen, you know, consecutively. So based off that, you're probably looking at a three-year project right now. Like I said, with the constructability, we all know it's not going to be easy. You know, so you have daytime, nighttime, you're probably going to have some detours mixed in, and obviously, these are all in very easy locations, right? You know, you have the business impact, you have the traveling public impact, you know, but in the end, I think you've got a great project here, as I've done a few of these in the past, not quite this big, but I think, in the end, I think everybody in the room will be happy. So with that, I think we're at the point now where, you know, this is what Steve had kind of mentioned earlier. You've got the $25 million for federal discretionary funds. The state and city are right around $3 million apiece. And there's also some federal flexible funding in there of $647,000. I'm not sure exactly where that came from, but that's basically what the project holds for funding. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to you, whether here in the room first, for any questions and comments to me or the team, and we'll answer them as best we can, and then from there, we'll go to the audience on the video. So with that, I'll open the floor. Anybody internally have any questions at this time for the group?
...when people are shy to say something first. Yeah. Maura Hurley. I have Maura Hurley, H-E-R-L-I-H-Y. We have properties on two of the projects. One is on Cottage Street up at Janess Lane, where it meets Janess Lane, where the two houses on Janess Lane. So I asked some questions earlier about the slope. There's a huge change from when the first public hearing was. I don't know if everybody remembers that, but they were taking the whole slope down, and we were concerned about noise impact in particular. So that doesn't seem to be happening. However, the question I failed to ask is, what kind of vegetation is going to be removed from that slope? And is there going, if there's a significant amount, is there going to be vegetation returned in areas, just like a wall would be returned, so that there is some protection on noise? I guess that's one of my questions. I don't know if anybody's going to answer that or if you're just going to write it down.
No, you know, the plan will be to, obviously, we don't want to leave that slope so it doesn't, you know, we've got to leave it stable.
Exactly.
You know, so there could be some plantings of some kind or some sort of vegetation to stabilize it.
That was one of my questions. It doesn't, again, nothing looks like it's being heavily impacted in that general area. The other question I had on Main Street is, how soon in advance am I going to be made aware of what you're planning so that I can coordinate projects that I've been waiting to do? I didn't want to do any projects that would then get destroyed by a major overhaul, but I own part of the sidewalk, which I'd like to redo, and you're going to be doing your sidewalks, they match up, and they're untouched for years to come, and nobody... So that's sort of a question of mine and other little things so that I, you know, I and other property owners can be prepared, save our little portion aside, and do projects that would help add to these great projects we're having in our community.
Yeah, I think probably when we come back next time, I'll be able to answer that a little better. The team will be able to answer, excuse me, a little better, because we're kind of still playing around with what's exterior of that curb line. So when we come back, we'll be able to tell you, you know, go ahead and do what you want from this area out, because we've had that happen in a lot of places where people go out, plant trees and fences and stuff like that, then all of a sudden, we come back to and rip it up. But anytime you have any questions related to that as we get down through there, by all means, reach back out to us or me, and we'll be able to try and give you a better sense if you are going to do something like that. But I would say probably next year, I'll have a better answer for you.
Yeah, the better, and we had, around the neighborhood, the city did a project that didn't look anything like I expected on certain sections of my property, and I have, you know, more landscaping to do to fix the slopes, et cetera, et cetera, and I want to be prepared for that, so I want to know in advance any major projects I might have to accomplish during that time. And I'm sure there are other property owners who feel the same way. I guess one of my final questions, I don't know if anybody knows this, but are you removing the tree between North Parish and, I'm at 883 Main Street? Are you taking that nice big tree down?
I am not sure right now. Again, with the utility coordination that we still have to, that has to take place with the aerial utilities, I'm not sure at this point in time.
There are no aerial, well, there's just a little bit cutting onto the property.
Right. We can certainly look at that after we get done tonight, right now, if you want. The other aspect of some of the things you're asking about is, so like I mentioned, that PIC point, then we're going to do the right-of-way maps, and then we get the right-of-way maps done, they're going to have to appraise every one of those properties that have impacts. So you're actually going to have an appraiser call you and say, "I'm going to come out and visit. I just need to come out and look at your property." And then, from there, then you're going to meet a negotiator, will come actually sit down and show you those plans. So you're going to have pretty much two direct contacts, and then with the design team, you could actually have probably up to two or three more contacts before this project even begins.
So every property owner will be going through that, which is what you were talking about? And I'm trying to like ask questions for other property owners who are in here.
Yep, if they're impacted. If there's impacts to that property, we will talk to them, and sometimes, we don't impact properties, but yet, the roadway's getting rebuilt in front of their property. So we won't talk to that property owner because we're not impacting their property. So that's why it's important, as we make our way down through design, that people pay attention to the, you know, the hearing times and dates, so they can physically come ask those questions when needed.
And on a final note, because you mentioned it, I received one, other than the flyer you sent in the mail, knowing about this as a city councillor, paying attention like I do. I received a letter in the mail today, post-dated the 15th for tonight's meeting. That was for me personally. I own two house slots back from my parents. My parents have, did not, who are the ones right on the corner of Janess and Cottage, have not received any notice of this public hearing as of yet. And Townhouse Properties, which is the property 883 Main Street, did not receive a notice of this meeting, email separately from just flyers. So there wasn't anything official that actually got to us before this meeting. I just thought you should know that, so you can be a little more cautious on the final. I think it's important that property owners have a little bit of heads up to plan their schedule.
Yeah, the one thing we're at right now with the mailings is that we're basically going off tax maps, and the mailing list that we pulled was that off the tax maps of the city map?
Yeah, it was off the GIS for the city of Sanford.
I think what your problem is, is the US Postal Service possibly. I mailed an insurance bill in plenty of time, and they canceled my insurance because it hadn't arrived in time, and it was two weeks after I'd mailed it.
Yeah, I do know the letters went out on time, so people would get them, and I was going to say that. There is some issues with some of the areas with the USPS. I have it in my area, haven't got mail in two days, so it's widespread. It is, I guess. I guess moving forward, just to follow up with some of your question here is, you know, there is going to be a website related to this project on the DOT website. Also, it'll be linked to the city's website. With all this information that we've mailed, presented, it'll all be up there hopefully soon, sooner than later. We've had some folks out at DOT that handle our website. Our webmaster's been out on leave a little bit. So hopefully, after today or tomorrow, we'll have everything up to date on our website, so it'll be live. And once that happens, obviously, I'm going to reach out to the city and maybe at a council meeting in the future, you know, it can be mentioned that these websites are live with accurate information.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get property owners who are impacted directly to have, you know, early knowledge of that website, so that they can continually check on your progress, when meetings are. I know it's helpful for me, I know some seniors might not find this helpful, but I suspect a great majority of the people along your project routes would find it helpful.
Yeah, exactly. And so on our website, you can actually comment, make a comment on it, and it'll come directly to me. So that's another way to reach out directly and not have, hopefully not, hopefully the mail system gets a little bit better as we move forward here, but I would definitely reach out to me personally via the website if you have, anybody has any questions as far as property owners that are here or not here tonight.
Yeah, because when we had the first Cottage Street public hearing, there were quite a few people from the neighborhood, especially further out than I am out of town, because we all had the same concerns about the traffic, about the June Street turning. We don't fear the hill, we fear the people who come over the hill when we're trying to turn onto June Street. And that was a big topic of conversation at the first public hearing, so to not see many, any, I don't think any of the neighbors past me are here, and that's, my concern is they didn't get noticed.
I remember it well.
Okay.
It was there.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else internally? You're letting me down. I know there's got to be a lot of questions out there.
All right. Good evening. Mike Termas, city councillor, and I just wanted to say to everybody here, you know, talking in the open forum portion earlier was very helpful, well planned. However, the Winter Street portion of that, where you've got to mitigate the, you know, the traffic, or the safety, I should say, the safety part of that. How much of a plan right now do you guys, you know, focus on when it comes to safety, when you're speaking of vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic?
Yeah, it was brought up at our last public meeting. We haven't spent a lot of time implementing anything. We will as part of final design. It's got a flashing light right now at that intersection as a safety measure. We're going to look to enhance that. It's looking at Winter Street itself, it's a state road, it's an arterial, it's a highway priority, corridor priority number one, which is, I think, pretty high up, one or two. So we're going to take a look at the flashing beacon, we're going to take a look at the stop, what's happening is the stop conditions on Riverside. People aren't stopping, they're failing to yield, and they're pulling out in front of traffic. So if we can mitigate that with more visible signage, stop signs, maybe their LED flashing stop signs as one option. We had a similar project up in Auburn, high crash location. We did LED flashing stop signs. We actually did a raised intersection, so all the crosswalks were elevated, so it requires all four legs of traffic, even the non-stop legs, to slow down to go over basically a raised table. The whole intersection was raised up to curb height. The issue that we have with this road, it's an arterial, it's a state aid road, and they have restrictions. It's considered vertical traffic coming, and there's certain restrictions for that, so it would require a special approval, kind of a design exception with DOT, but that is an option, one of the more extreme options that we can look at. We might consider flashing beacons, pedestrian flashing beacons for the side path crossing.
We also had worked recently with the Bicycle Coalition of Maine to do some pilot projects, some traffic installations around Sanford, and they had looked at that intersection in particular and bounced an idea of a four-way stop there off of a main DOT Region One traffic engineer who just shot it down completely. You know, that's an arterial, you're not going to be adding a stop condition to an arterial even in a demonstration situation. So those ideas that Don was mentioning, I think are good ones. I think the flashing beacon on RRFB, Rapid Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, might be a good one. That's the same kind of installation you see out in front of City Hall, gets the driver's attention. It's also very important that we don't overuse those, because people do tend to get desensitized to them. So we want to be careful about where we put them in and make sure it's where people will pay attention and not take them for granted.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys being here tonight.
Thank you. All right, anybody else internally?
My name is Prudence Lee. I'm a member of the Southern Maine Garden Club, currently at Washington and Main Street. There is a traffic... There is a traffic island, landscape, the island, I'm already in. Is that going to continue or will that be removed? I didn't see it on the plans.
The median island inside the intersection will be removed. The sidewalk in front of the Trust Building will be widened. The Trust Building's basement is actually underneath the sidewalk and is part of the project will be extending the curb line away from the Trust Building. So there'll be a public right-of-way for pedestrians inside of the right-of-way. As part of that, there are going to be some landscaped elements on that side of the street. So there may be an opportunity there to shift it to the corner. But the median island is planned to be removed as part of the project.
And I think some of those opportunities that you mentioned, Ethan, where basically the sidewalk will have two different levels. There'll be a higher side to the sidewalk and a lower side to the sidewalk. We were talking about maybe instead of just putting a kind of a vanilla curb that someone would step down off of, maybe turn that into a planter opportunity. So it would be raised, it would be elevated, it would catch the eye. And it'd also be safe to maintain. You wouldn't have to be out in the middle of traffic in order to maintain the garden opportunity. Along with that, I think it was also mentioned here tonight in the open house comments, is that along the William Oscar Armory corridor, Seth with the Cedar Landscape Architects has got some landscaping medians in there. One at River Street, one at the transition between William Oscar Armory and Riverside Avenue. And then there was also a comment earlier that we might be able to take, go and park drive and add a median strip there in order to create essentially three gateways to the recreational area. Seth, would you like to elaborate?
No, I think that's a great idea. Anytime you can kind of create that access and that transition from street to a gateway to notify you in a different area. In particular, along William Oscar Armory makes a lot of sense given it feels more park-like. And the plantings that we are proposing currently within there are salt-tolerant and more durable plants and native. So I just wanted to put that out there as well, because I know there's been some concerns in the past about what is going to be proposed in those zones.
I just wanted to add too that although we haven't talked about it, there's, you'll see a lot of green space on our plans as well in different areas. So there will be landscaping throughout the downtown projects as well, where there's some space in between the roadway and the sidewalk. And there could be opportunities there as well. You saw some of the renderings that are there. So that's something that we'll be working with the department, the landscape team, and kind of determining, maybe there's other opportunities in certain locations as well for something like that.
Yeah, I think with the overall project, there's intent to add landscaping features to this, to the entire project. Like Tony said, we're early. As we come back next time, and we can analyze some of those bump-out areas that were mentioned and look at the crossings and see if there's opportunities for that grass, espannard. We'll see, I think there's a few places out there where we can replace what's being lost for sure.
All right, one more question. Mike Termath, T-E-R-M-A-T-H. On William Oscar Armory Drive, we have the Sanford Armory. And so they have, you know, quite a, you know, state owns that property right there and there's a lot of frontage. So are you going to try to help tie in some of that curb appeal towards the dog park? You know, from the armory side, are you going to work with the state main of, you know, Military Bureau and Veterans Affairs to try to, you know, get them on board to maybe do a curb or something right there in front of that location?
Yeah, through that area, the corridor is going to be consistent. So we want the same theme, whether it's landscaping, curbing, sidewalk, through that whole area. Looking at the graphics, it looks like we might provide, it's a wide-open area, I think, right now. We're providing two entrances. So we'll provide some, basically some access management in there, looking at the graphic on the wall.
Thank you.
All right, I guess that concludes our public hearing for tonight. Thank you all for coming. As I said, my contacts' information is on the agenda. We'll get those websites up and running, which will be another mechanism for people to comment on. We'll get that information to Steve so he can mention it at the upcoming council meetings just so everybody can go take a look at all the information presented tonight. Again, thank you all for coming.